This conference will now be recorded.
Welcome to the South Whitehall Planning Commission. The meeting will be recorded. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Greg, roll call and meeting rules.
Here we go. Brian Height.
Here.
Diane Kelly.
Here.
Mark Luth.
Here.
Bill McNair.
Here.
Alan Tope. Not present. David Wilson.
Here.
We have five members present. That is sufficient for a quorum.
Meeting rules?
Meeting rules. For an orderly meeting wherein all attendees are fully able to participate, we ask that you adhere to the following rules. Please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid background noise that may cause interference in the meeting and make it difficult for others to hear. Staff may mute microphones of remote attendees if needed. Public questions and comments will be taken at periodic intervals throughout the agenda. We will start with no time limits, but the Planning Commission Chairman may impose a time limitation if there are many questions or if the meeting is running short on time. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized and then move to the podium when directed and state your name, address, and comment or question. Please turn on the podium microphone before speaking and off when done. For remote attendees, the chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address in the chat box, which is the speech icon in the upper right. When you are recognized and so directed, please unmute your microphone and state your question or comment. Mute your microphone when you're done. For those who are accessing the meeting by phone only, staff will periodically ask for caller comments and unmute any callers. Callers must identify their name and address prior to making a comment. Your cooperation and adherence to these rules will ensure an orderly and respectful meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. It will go to Agenda Item 3, which is the approval of the meeting minutes, which were delivered prior to the meeting. Does anyone have any comments on the meeting minutes? Hearing none, motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Diane, second by Brian.
Roll call. Brian Height.
Aye.
Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Mark Luth.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Aye.
Motion passes five to zero.
Agenda Item 4, Comprehensive Plan Review.
So Comprehensive Plan Update. Excuse me. We had the work. Well, we tried to have the workshop meeting last week, and we had technical difficulty. Rather than rescheduling and trying to get everybody's calendar sync coordinated, we're going to have the Planning Commission do their prioritization exercise before the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, we will review the work that we completed at the first meeting, the goals and objectives. And then we will also review the natural resources. To date, we had, I believe it was four Planning Commission members do their prioritization. So if you haven't done it yet, please jump on that. I think it closes Sunday. So get that done. And then for the April meeting, we'll go over both natural resources and overall goals and objectives.
Thank you, David. Okay. Agenda Item 5 is the subdivision review. We have two cases tonight. The first one is the St. Luke's West End Medical Center Short Stay Facility. Anyone here for that? Okay. And so we will start that with the staff presentation. All right, Greg.
This is an application to further develop the property at 501 Citronia Road. The plan proposes to construct a two-story, 52,571-square-foot medical office building on the existing parking lot and provide 605 parking spaces on the 17.33-acre parcel. The property is zoned Highway Commercial 1, special height limitation HC1. St. Luke's Hospital of Bethlehem is the owner and applicant. The Community Development Department recommends that the Planning Commission take the plan under advisement to afford the applicant the time necessary to address the reviewing agency's comments. Our recommendation is contingent upon the applicant granting the township a waiver from the timeframe in which to act upon the plan. The Planning Commission's soft deadline to act on the plan is April 16, 2022. The Board of Commissioners' hard deadline to act on the plan is May 16, 2022.
Thank you, Greg. An applicant?
Thank you. Is that working?
Did you?
Yes. Some of you know me. I'm Joe Booba, representing St. Luke's. And as Mr. Manhart said, this is really placing a building on the existing parking lot. No new impervious. Actually, the impervious is a bit better. It's overparked. The prior traffic studies that were done in conjunction with KRE took all of this, took a certain volume into account. We're under those numbers. We realize we still have some outside agencies that we need to review. We really don't have any questions about the engineering comments. We'll comply with all of those. And I'm here for questions or any follow-up, but I'd like to introduce Ray Midlam to let you know a little bit about the project. Thank you.
Hello, thank you. I'm Ray Midlam. I'm the Vice President of Strategy and Business Development for St. Luke's. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the project and what we're doing there. So as he mentioned, this will be our second facility at the West End Medical Center. The first facility was, it's almost a decade ago now at this point in time, probably a little bit longer than that. When we established the West End Medical Center there, it was, at the time, one of St. Luke's first medical office buildings of its style and size. And it's been very successful. Today, it hosts everything from family medicine, the primary care, urgent care, lab, imaging, physical therapy, and a very popular fitness center. It also hosts, as Joe mentioned, a very large parking lot, which was a legacy item left over from the builder's square that we renovated to bring the property back to life. But that does allow us to use the property in what we feel will be a little bit more, a little better manner and take advantage of what's out there, bringing to life this second, this short-stay hospital. What is a short-stay hospital? For the way we envision it, it will be primarily an orthopedics hospital. Its short stay references the fact that patients will not stay in it very long. Just like it means. Imagine several ORs in the operating rooms, and there's 20 or so beds that will be on the second floor for patients that need to recover for a day or so. This is a place for scheduled surgeries, primarily healthy individuals but injured or addressing some sort of other problem, but healthy, but injured. It is not a facility that has an emergency department. It is not, there's not critical care. There are not helicopters flying into it and trauma and ambulances coming in and out. It's for scheduled surgery for the relatively healthy to have a hip, a knee, carpal tunnel, or something else done in a few days' time. Regarding the few days' time, actually, more and more orthopedics, as you guys probably know, is moving to outpatient or same-day. We expect hips and knees replacements, which today can still be one or two nights' stay. The majority of them to be actually released the same day. So over time, less people relying on inpatient services, which is one of the reasons why we're actually looking to have this facility outside of a traditional hospital. We keep the healthy, mobile, or at least mobile when they leave, away from the sick and more of an acute center like our Allentown Hospital. Come out to a place like this that has easy access, very consumer-friendly, will have high patient satisfaction and very high quality. It is a very cost-effective way for us to do this as well. That, in a nutshell, is really what it is. I mean, we've had great success with our West End Medical Campus. It's one of our most popular campuses that we have, and we expect this to be very popular as well. We've put together a submission for you, and I know we've gotten our preliminary feedback. There's nothing on there that we thought needed questioning or look more into. I'm sure there's some things to clean up and to dot the i's and cross the t's. But other than that, I think we're in pretty good shape. And if you have any questions for me, please feel free. Oh, we do have. You have that already? Yeah. So you see, it is in line, if you're familiar with the site, it is very much in line with the facility that's already out there. To keep that look and feel, it is a two-story building. So it's not going to appear to be. There it is, from the main drive entrance. One of the things that we actually will be doing a little improvement there, which was noted in your plans, is the main entrance was a legacy entrance. We're actually improving that a little bit. We're straightening that up so you don't have to wind around as much. And we also think we actually have the parking lot segmented a little better so you're forced to make a left or a right, depending on your facility. We do have the sidewalks. And I know that was a question mark. The sidewalks are in the plan, and there was a comment in there to make sure there was one additional entranceway. We do have that, and we're looking forward to putting that in there as well.
I appreciate that. The current setup with the driveway is a little speed conducive, especially in the morning. I've been at that facility many times, and pedestrians walk into your gym certain hours in the morning. Sometimes they have to speed up their John, so I appreciate that. And I had to hear that you will connect to the existing crosswalks at the intersection.
Yeah. We'll add that. And our idea was to match. We're looking at it. But the idea, I believe, on the south, what I consider the south side of the other side of the street, we'll go through that and put that on the plans as needed.
I have two questions. How is the traffic control going to? Is, when you come into the facility, will you have to stop? Or can you just keep going to a left or a right?
When you actually, do we have that?
Sure. John Rogers, Keystone Consulting Engineers. So you're talking about this intersection, this point here? So it's not shown, signage isn't currently shown. This was part of the review comments. Access in will be free flow, left or right. I'll call them side approaches. We'll have stop control on either side. What we're proposing.
Thank you. And my follow-up question is, is do you have any of these facilities anywhere else?
As far as a short-stay hospital? We have full-service hospitals and we have ambulatory surgery centers. There really is no difference between a short-stay hospital and a full hospital. It is required to have the hospital services and the same hospital regulations. It's the way you designate it, and it's the services you provide within. And we are not providing within the ED, the critical care, or anything that would require that higher level of acuity. So that's what defines it to a short-stay hospital. We do have ambulatory surgery centers, which you can primarily think of this as this. Our Anderson Campus has something very similar with six ORs and four GI labs. Our Warren Hospital Campus has an ambulatory surgery center there as well. This is really an ambulatory surgery center that has the 20 beds on top for the people who require one or two days.
So they're similar in size.
Yeah. Well, actually, this footprint is very similar. So it's a 25, basically a 25,000 square foot footprint, which is very similar to our Anderson Campus footprint. They're 25,000 as well.
I've been there, too. Thank you.
I'll second what Brian said. I do like how the driveway's been realigned. It makes it a safer situation. You have a long driveway throat, so now cars can queue there. One thing you may want to take into account is the bus stop for Lanta. I know they've been indicating they want to put a bus stop along Citronia so they don't have to drive all the way into the hospital and out because that lengthens their schedules.
I think in our plan, if it's not shown enough, what I'm looking at here in that bottom left-hand corner is where Lanta wants to put their bus stop, if that sounds familiar to you. And I believe they've asked us to pour a pad down there, and that should be the connecting point there. When that, when we settle everything with that.
Any other questions?
So I heard Mr. Adams' recommendation. We would ask, and I guess that's certainly subject to the township engineer's thoughts, but we don't think the engineering comments are the type of things that necessarily need to come back to this group. We feel as if Mr. Pittcock's office and staff could certainly review those. So we are asking for approval this evening. As I said, we certainly heard Mr. Adams' comments. I just hate wasting people's time, and I'm not sure whatever we draw on the plan next month's going to be any different for this group, so.
I think we do need to have, you know, we aren't going to be approving it tonight.
And Mr. McNair, as I told my group, I've been here enough. I know when not to push that issue. But I, not only did I need to ask, I actually did think it was a relatively clean engineering letter in terms of input from Planning Commission. But we hear you loud and clear.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this project? Yes, please. Come up to the mic. Could you?
Getting there. I just have a demographic.
Could you identify yourself?
My name is Michael Selig, 2816 Orfield Road. I'm a physician. I'm sure you've done the demographics, but there are similar orthopedic facilities that do exactly the same thing. One's on Cedar Crest and the other one's just up the street on Tillman. Now, and in light of current status of our economy and et cetera, I just question need for another, obviously, competing facility. You know, if the demographics is really going to really pan out, if there's really a need.
Thank you.
It's all interconnected as far as the way we look at it. So there certainly are competing facilities. And Lehigh Valley has a hospital. Lehigh Valley acquired Coordinated Health. Coordinated Health has a hospital. St. Luke's does as well for these surgeries. So not only are we, the demographics, of course, we all know about the aging baby boomers and more and more people requiring hips and knees. The projections for what's required in orthopedics is actually staggering. Not only will there be more and more hips and knees and shoulders worked on, there'll also be a time, unfortunately, where people will probably be replacing them more than once in their life because of the damage people have been doing to their bodies. But on top of that, too, is we, St. Luke's has a very large orthopedic group. The orthopedic surgeries and procedures that we're already doing, many of them will be moved to this facility to open up capacity in some of our other facilities that will allow more of the injured, the critical, the sick and the critical care to be taken care of in those facilities. So some will actually be a transplant. But our orthopedic group is very large in size, and we don't see any. We, personally, we probably expect that we'll be looking to do another one of these very shortly, but in another part of the region, is our projections.
From a somewhat of an outsider's perspective, I'm just saying to Ray, as the question came up, just in the last six or seven years since I've been doing this, we've Anderson Campus, Upper Bucks, Lee Heighton, Monroe, and Orwigsburg, not even counting Easton Hospitals acquisition. Every one of those hospitals that were built, probably within two to three years, we've gone back to each and every one of them and had to expand. And all of those start with demographic studies, and it seems like they should be satisfied. But those expansions have all either been completed or are underway. It's, it may not be a happy thought, but that's exactly where the population's going. So it's sort of, if you build it, people will come.
Any other questions, comments? I guess I appreciate your effort, Attorney Booba, to push for no additional meeting, but I think I'm going to ask for a motion to take this under advisement. And I guess we would need first your.
Were you tabling it or table?
You think we need to?
It's up to them.
Okay. All right. We can go through that. We can go through the waivers now. Okay. The first one is a waiver of the requirement to show existing contours within 400 feet of the tract. Motion to?
Or move?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And David is abstaining. Okay. Second one is the waiver of the requirement to show the location, size, and owners of existing buildings, sewer mains, water mains, culverts, storm sewers, petroleum product lines, AS lines, transmission lines, right-of-way, fire hydrants, underground tanks, wells, septic systems within 100 feet of the site.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain again. St. Luke's is a client of mine. I do engineering work for them.
Second one. The third is a waiver of the requirements to show the location, character, and elevation of any building within 100 feet of the tract.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the last is a waiver of the requirements to show the locations and widths of all sidewalks, trails, driveways, streets, easements, and right-of-way plotted or on the existings, or existing within the subdivision and 400 feet of any part of the tract.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
All right. That takes care of the waivers. Now as for a motion to take this under advisement.
Go move.
Second.
Do a roll call.
Brian Height.
Aye.
Now it's working. Diane Kelly.
Aye.
Mark Luth.
Aye.
Bill McNair.
Aye.
David Wilson.
Abstain.
Motion passes four to zero.
Two. Right. And I'll move on to the next case for this evening. It's Springfield Subdivision Major Plan 2022-105, and it's a request for a sketch plan review.
I represent.
Okay. Okay. We'll do the.
If I can just interrupt for a second, please, because we do have remote participants, and unless you're speaking directly into the microphone, they cannot hear you remotely. So if anybody speaks tonight, including from the Planning Commission and the audience, please make sure you're speaking directly into your microphones. Okay? Thank you.
I'll repeat. Joe Booba, representing Jerris Corporation.
Thank you.
This is an application to further develop the property located at 2493 North Cedar Crest Boulevard, 2976 Mock Chunk Road, North Cedar Crest Boulevard PIN 5488-1303-1059, and North Cedar Crest Boulevard PIN 5488-039015, I'm sorry, 1857. The plan proposes to subdivide the combined 406.94-acre tract into 65 industrial lots and one open space lot, each lot typically between four and eight acres in size. Approximately 3.20 miles of new road and stormwater management facilities are also proposed. The tract is zoned industrial. I. Jerris Corporation is the owner and applicant. Previous township consideration, we have none on file. Staff would like to point out that the applicant has submitted a sketch plan for township review. A sketch plan is not defined in the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code and is only mentioned three times within, twice within Article 7 Traditional Neighborhood Development under Section 707A Sketch Plan Presentation, and once within Article 10A Appeals to Court under Section 1006A Judicial Relief. Section 707A states that, quote, "The municipality may informally meet with a landowner to informally discuss the conceptual aspects of the landowner's development prior to the filing of the application for preliminary approval of the development plan. The landowner may present a sketch to the municipality for discussion purposes only, and during the discussion, the municipality may take, make suggestions and recommendations on the design of the development plan, which shall not be binding on the municipality." It is generally, unquote, "It is generally understood that a sketch plan has no legal standing and is conceptual in nature." Staff would also like to point out that the current South Whitehall Township official map portrays a minor arterial future road running generally from east to west on the subject tract. Staff notes that the future minor arterial road appears to be incorporated into the applicant's plan and that staff and Planning Commission review the location for the proposed minor arterial road to determine if it is acceptable to the township. The Community Development Department's recommendation is that the applicant utilize the comments of the reviewing agencies and those of the Planning Commission to assist in the preparation of preliminary plans. As alluded to earlier, there are no deadline dates to act on the plan as this is a sketch plan only. Thank you.
I know this will sound a bit unusual given the scope of what's in front of you. But frankly, as you know, we're not requesting any action. I just wanted to go over a little bit of background. This is a very significant parcel of land that is zoned industrial. And as you know, from looking at the plan, a subdivision is proposed to split the lot, to split the large parcel into lots, all of which comply with the sizing of the zoning ordinance, all of which would house uses currently permitted in the industrial district. The Bronsteins, who many of you know, who've probably attended more township meetings, I'm sure they have, attended more township meetings than anyone in this room, who are, I'm sure, available remotely tonight, have owned this land. Their families own this land for more than 100 years. And they have needed to decide what they will do with that land. And that's why, at this point in time, we're here submitting a sketch plan. We acknowledge all of the comments in the various review letters, including specifically the water and sewer issues. They are the same issues that we're looking at right now. We know there are water and sewer issues. We have some really good ideas about what we need to do to try to resolve those issues with options. with options, but we're not at that point yet, which is why we have not yet prepared a preliminary final plan. So all I would indicate is that, you know, every step, every journey starts with a single step, and that's what this is. We're here to hear people's comments, and we'll respond if necessary. Our plan is, as I said, to continue our due diligence, coupled with the position and statements that have already been submitted to us, and presumably more will come, and then incorporate all those into a fully engineered plan. Thank you.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I have a few comments and questions. I'm sure you're well aware, and the people in the audience are well aware, we're currently going through a comp plan revision. And during this process, we take a lot of feedback from the township residents. I know farm preservation is a very important topic with a lot of the residents. So I just want to make sure everyone's aware that we are taking feedback from the residents of this township. And once we get that feedback from the residents and compile all the data, that feedback may be a driver for zoning, and that may impact zoning. We don't know what that outcome will be, but I just want to make everyone aware that we are going through that process, and that may impact things. I looked through the documents, and I guess my first question is, has there ever been a Phase One done on the property? I know there is a gunpowder facility there.
We've just completed, and the project engineer Jill Smith is here. We've completed significant soil samplings, I believe, some level of. Yeah, come on up.
So Hanover has not, I'm sorry, Jill Smith from Hanover Engineering. Hanover has not done any type of soil testing out there. What we've done is we've gone out and done soil probes for looking at rock, because there are a number of rock outcrops. So we kind of did some initial research to see, okay, what are we looking at? You know, is it feasible to build something like we're showing here? Rock actually ended up being a lot better as far as the depth of it. So it does seem like it's feasible to, you know, develop it for industrial. The other thing we did was we just did a plumeri environmental, looking for wetlands and that type of thing. But to answer the question, as far as I know, Hanover has not been involved with the Phase One.
Yeah, and I may be, I may be not being completely accurate, Mr. Wilson, but I believe over time, long before this submission, that the Jarris family has engaged in various environmental studies. But please don't take that as gospel. We certainly know we have to do that.
Just as a general comment, I would recommend one being done. BP will probably require one, but.
As will most banks, I would expect.
Just going down my list. I know industrial developments bring some traffic, and a lot of times road widens are required as a result. Are you aware if, have you had any discussions with PennDOT? And do you foresee any right-of-way taking being required? And if so, where that would be? And is it private land that right-of-way taking would be required?
Okay, so to answer the question, we have not had any plumeri, even plumeri discussions with PennDOT at this point. So at the point we feel it's applicable, we would apply for this scoping meeting because we do realize that Cedar Crest Boulevard and Monchunk Road, we will potentially have to do improvements on. And I should say, not potentially, we will, because we'll have major entrances. As it was mentioned, we do know that the township official map shows a minor arterial to connect Monchunk and Cedar Crest. So I think that's something the township looks as a positive to maybe try to eliminate or alleviate some issues up on Orville Road and the intersections there. But I think we are anticipating that we're going to have to do improvements on Cedar Crest, Monchunk Road. I don't even know where the traffic, there's going to be obviously a traffic impact study. So whether that's going to even go down to 22, we don't know. But, you know, this is one thing, part of the things we're doing as far as exploring the feasibility of this development.
And I understand it's very early, so I'm just trying to bring up topics that may come up.
Yeah, we have evaluated the railroad overpass. And so, again, I don't have an answer to that, but we know we've looked at that in terms of options.
At this point, our initial thoughts are, we won't have to do anything as far as expanding the area where the railroad overpasses. But once again, until we have more detailed discussions with PennDOT, we can't tell our clients definitely, you know, that's not going to be something that they're going to have to consider.
And in terms of the sketch plan and the stormwater areas that were provided on it, once again, I know it's very early, and you typically don't get into that detail at this stage. It looked like the stormwater areas are a little smaller than what they're going to end up needing to be.
Yeah, so the intention is, and obviously, we haven't done any significant stormwater design for this, but the intention is the stormwater that we're showing is going to be accommodating the public improvements, meaning the right, the roads, and that each individual lot owner who would come in would have to do their own stormwater management.
That may take up some of the square footage of the lot.
Yeah, basically, those are like, we're in two different watershed areas, and those are pretty much the low points where we know we're probably going to have to put some facility. With the BMPs and your water quality, I mean, to your point, they may end up being twice the size. But just for plumeri purposes and, you know, acknowledging the fact and kind of giving our client, you know, an idea of what we're looking at stormwater, it's kind of our best guess at this time.
Everyone knows about the sanitary situation. Are you looking into like a prepackaged plant, or?
We don't know. And, you know, honestly, it's hard. And I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to come in with a sketch plan is just to kind of let the township know, you know, the client's thinking about developing this and getting conversations started. Because in the initial research I did, that was the first, you know, one of the major concerns I had is the sanitary sewer and availability and capacity in the treatment plant as well as conveyance systems. But without knowing specific clients too, it's hard to even guess what our sewer flows may be.
Ideally, ideally, we'd like to expand water and sewer throughout this area. But as an example, just adjacent to this is Parkland High School, which I'm sure has significant EDUs compared to some of the types of facilities that might be here. And as you know, they have a packaged plant. So we, no final decision, but again, there's two different pathways.
We're looking at public water. We're looking at public sewer. How we get public water, we're still, I mean, public, I think, public water's pretty good, but public sewer is still kind of the unknown. And that's one of the major issues, I think, for the project.
Then potential end users, it's sort of nothing right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep, so basically sketch plan, concept plan, but just an idea of how potentially this lot could be developed.
Yeah, I, while we obviously are at sketch plan, I do want to say that the engineering team has spent a pretty significant amount of time locating the lot lines based upon the rock and those items. So while there will certainly be changes because if a pond needs to be double sized or something, this isn't just, this isn't just, you know, throw 50 lots on the paper. This has been designed based upon the karsh and everything else that's in the area.
Okay, that's pretty much all my comments. I'll just reiterate, the comp plan is a big item and may have big impacts. So I recommend you follow that closely.
We are, and I think as people know here, Jarris has been an active participant in the comp plan. Maybe its position might not be exactly the same as other participants, but it has been an active participant.
Any other questions? Who asks for a public comment now?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think what I'm going to say is probably going to be.
Please identify yourself and your address.
I did already. Michael Selli.
Thank you.
2816 Orville Road. I have 10 acres right north of this development.
Sorry, I'm having a little trouble hearing you even here. I think it's because of your mask, and it's okay for you to keep it on. But if you speak directly into the microphone, that would be helpful.
I have 10 acres. It's right butted up against this development. And honestly, when I first saw this plan, I thought it was for housing development. I mean, not, in no way would I think it would be industrial lots because that would disrupt and destroy the nature of this neighborhood. And especially to have an industrial development right across from one of the nicest high schools that's been built. That being said, it's already a disaster from a traffic standpoint. They'd have to have five lanes going up and down Cedar Crest to accommodate heavy trucks and all that extra traffic. Currently, it's a disaster anywhere near in the morning and afternoon just for local people to travel or even to get to the school. And now you're going to cloud this up with, you know, all kinds of spurious traffic and trucks and et cetera. And then that railroad, that would have to be modified. That would have to be widened. There's no way you can fit four lanes or two lanes each side without having to modify that. And again, I think the neighbors would agree that we've always appreciated the farm preservation of the area. And I just think it would be, it would destroy the character of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
No, it's zoned industrial.
Bill Meltzer, 3226 Fallow Drive. I live in a very close proximity, right behind the Parkland High School. And I have similar concerns about traffic during the week, Monday through Friday, school year in particular. Anywhere between 7:00 and 9:00, traffic is backed way up. The evening, summer situation, stoplight to stoplight and even beyond in terms of when you get up to that really funny intersection with Morgan's back beyond the high school, down the hill. This would probably make the traffic even much worse. The other thing is the water situation. I have a well, private residence, 500 feet. My neighbor has a well, 200 feet. My other neighbor doesn't have a well because he couldn't get a well. So he had to actually drop water down. So the water situation is really pretty iffy. So if there's a high water demand, you probably need to really, you know, double check that. Not to mention what that may do for the other residents. If the demand is so great that hydrology might actually lower to the pack that we wouldn't even have any water. So from a high industrial use, I think we really want to take a look at that aspect of it also. Thank you.
Thank you. You come up to the microphone?
On the water issue, there's a little more history. I have a well. It's 800 feet. My neighbor has two wells, each is 1,000 feet. And apparently, that came about somewhere when the cement plant north of us came into existence, as well as geochemical. They have, in the past, have extracted so much water from the whole region that the plumes have lowered so far, they made it hard to get water.
Thank you.
Derek Jepson, 2729 Suncrest Drive. So I've been on Suncrest since 2000, so 22 years. And I know the comprehensive town plan, the idea behind the township plan is to preserve the integrity of the current neighborhoods that are there. And when you look at the comprehensive plan from 2009, this was looked at developing into a T4 suburban housing type community. It's an area of growth opportunity, talking about mixed residential use, a village-type environment, traditional neighborhood design. There is nowhere in there whatsoever that talks about industrial developments. That's just so far beyond what the township had planned for this area. You've got a high school across the street from one of the entrances. I can tell you categorically right now, there are a number of accidents that already happened there. Our youth are already at risk when it comes to accidents. We know that. Now you're adding an incredible amount of additional traffic. This is not a small industrial park, 406 acres. It's just not in keeping with what the design is intended to do. From a standpoint of the neighborhood, I'm sure, we would all prefer that it remained farmland. We chose to live here for the reasons that I think most people choose their housing, right? Great school district, the sort of rural environment where you want to raise your children. And now I'm looking at the prospect of sitting outside by my pool and looking across the street at, God, hundreds of lots of industrial development. Doesn't make any sense to me at all. It's not in keeping with what you intended, and I'm pretty confident it's not in keeping with what anybody here intends.
Thank you. The T4 did include industrial.
Light industrial, right. Not an industrial park, right? And not a mixed, and a mixed facility, mixed residences, right? Not an industrial park.
Hi, I'm Joe Kalanowski. I'm at 3015 Suncrest Drive. Two-part question. For the Jarris Corporation, what, who is the client base that Jarris is targeting to be tenants in this? And are they tenants, or are they going to own the properties within this development? Any type of industry in particular, or just light industrial, quote unquote?
We do need.
Yeah. We are so early in this stage. I will say that just because of the demographics of the Lehigh Valley, I think Jarris, as part of their legacy, would love to see some uses that are related to pharmas, healthcare, medical device manufacturing, et cetera. But there's been absolutely no outreach at all. If any of the Bronsteins were here, I think they would, they would say that, you know, education has been critically important to them and that they would like to see some symbiotic relationship between STEM and pharma and all of those types of uses. That's not a representation. I'm just telling you what I know at this point.
The second part is that in the description for this sketch plan, it said light industrial or other uses that may be permitted. What other kind of industrial, light industrial uses are permitted by the township in this area?
Yeah, just to clarify, I didn't use the word light industrial. I think light industrial is mentioned in the comprehensive plan. I think other people have mentioned light industrial. But the uses are set forth in the industrial district. I will tell you that. I will tell you that JRS has no desire to utilize this land for some of the heavy type of industrial uses that are already permitted in the district. I think quarrying is permitted, for example, those types of things. That's not what, that's not what they want their legacy to be.
Is it their intent to lease the properties or to sell them outright to the individuals?
I don't know. I would expect sell, but I don't know that. That's, I think that's more driven by market than, yeah, anybody who, you know, these aren't going to be itinerant tenants, right? I mean, anybody who puts up this type of facility would probably have a 50 or 100-year ground lease.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Greg, are you able to provide just?
Yeah, I can.
An answer to that zoning question?
Yep, I can read right down the list.
Thank you.
These are the permitted primary uses within the industrial zone. A coordinated development, which is a combination of any of the single uses that I'm about to say. Dairy and food processing and distribution, flex space, forestry, laundry and dry cleaning processing and distribution. That's not a shop. That's where they send their stuff. Manufacturing, mixed juice building, printing, binding and publishing, recreation, high intensity, research and development facilities, service business, shopping center, utility support facility, that's like a PPL training facility or something along those lines, veterinarians' office, wholesale sales, agriculture, horticulture, nursery, excluding raising and keeping of farm animals and including raising and keeping of farm animals, emergency response service facility like a police or fire station, historic resource, open space, place of worship, public building, low-intensity recreation, a commercial or trade school, or stormwater management facilities. These are all things that are permitted by right within the industrial zone. If you like, I can also quickly go through the special exception uses. That would be manufacturing and processing of all chemicals and explosives, quarries, and accessory employee dwelling unit, a boarding house, a cellular communication facility, cell tower, a correctional facility, a helipad, a heliport, a kennel, an outdoor storage, and a treatment center. And finally, as a conditional use, a solar energy facility, a special event venue, and a wind energy facility.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tara Hauser. I'm at 2913 Victoria Lane. I'm right off of Mechanicsville Road. First, I want to apologize for my gum. I have allergies, so my throat's been. And I also want to thank Mr. Adams for taking time to speak with me on the phone the other day. I really appreciate that. I just wanted to say a couple of things that, you know, as a, I work in the public school system. I'm a finance person for public schools. I know how much tax revenue this, this could mean to not only the district, but the county and the township as well. So we can't begrudge the Bronsteins for wanting to develop their land that they've held for 100 years, and I appreciate that. I think we have a really good opportunity here, though. I was kind of excited to hear that part of industrial is high-intensity recreation. Excuse me. My daughter is a swimmer. She graduated from Parkland High School. She's now at West Point, and I have a son that's going through some stuff. A lot of the teams locally have been trying to have conversations about how do we make Lehigh County the kind of powerhouse that Montgomery County, Maryland does? Montgomery County, Maryland has a fabulous facility that was a public-private initiative that has over eight pools in it. It's surrounded by lacrosse, soccer, football, tennis. It is a fabulous facility. And if you're going to talk about legacy, if the Bronsteins wanted to do something really awesome for the children of Parkland School District, then Lehigh County and beyond, you know, the opportunity to not worry about zoning because it's already in the code that high-intensity recreation could be used here. This could be an opportunity with the amount of federal funding that's flowing around right now to grab some of this land, incorporate it into the plan. It's ag on the other side of the street or rural, it's either rural residential or agricultural. Great place for fields, not so great to build. I know, I had a sinkhole in my yard. 2010, we had to spend $40,000 to remediate a sinkhole in my front yard. So I'm very concerned about, so that's the good news, right? Like, there's some really good opportunities here for this property, especially if we're talking legacy, for, you know, this family to do for the community that they've been a part of for over 100 years. My concerns, like everyone has already said, traffic, traffic, traffic and traffic. There's another very large, single-family home development going in at the end of Mauchunk Road in North Whitehall Township. All of that traffic's going to come right down Mauchunk Road. It was over 100 acres, and it's zoned for one-acre lots, and they're looking at putting in 75 houses. I know because my husband's family sold the land to the developer. So all that traffic's going to come straight down Mauchunk Road. I live at the corner of Mechanicsville and Mauchunk Road. I see, along with the stampings, probably an accident a week. There's an accident a week at the end of my street. Pulling out there in the morning, I jeniflect and hit the gas because that's the only way I'm going to get out on the Mauchunk Road. So, you know, you're talking about putting in a minor arterial road from the high school right to my front yard, which will turn my street into even more of a highway than it already is. So I'm concerned about that. You know, I think you guys have a lot to think about, and I'm very concerned that the only thing that went out to our neighborhood was a teeny-tiny postcard for a 400-acre development. I know that's all you have to do. But now that we know, we've got to tell a lot of people, and we've got to get a lot of people involved because as much as I like to think that we'll have great industrial neighbors, I highly doubt that. I was heartened to know that warehousing is not permitted. Is that correct? Okay, that's huge, and that made me happy that at least that wasn't in the plan. So I wish you guys luck. I'm glad I don't have your job.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your time.
I would like to make it clear, we are volunteers. These aren't official jobs. And to everyone's point, I just want to reiterate, the comp plan influences zoning. So if you want your voice heard, you know, come to these comp plan meetings, tell the planning commission and everyone uses you want and uses you don't want, and we can take that info and compile it and put it in the comp plan, which influences the zoning.
You can go to our website for the schedule of meetings for comp plan.
I also want to point out that we have one open seat on the planning commission, and we'll be taking interviews at the end of the month.
I'm Don Sheetsley, 1411 Hampton Road, and I'm glad to be back here. I was here when you dealt with the hotel, so I'm glad you all voted against it, so I'm really proud of you all. But I'm concerned about traffic like it was before. You still have that complex at Walbert Avenue, Huckleberry, and Cedar Crest that's not built yet, right, with all that traffic, right? And then you have all this traffic either going down Cedar Crest or back to going out in Mechanicsville Road, right, past the high school, out to MacArthur, right? That's the only choice of the traffic to go. So I'm just concerned about the traffic, and my wife says if I can't get a Trader Joe's.
Hi, my name's Bill Stanley. I live at 2913 Mauchunk Road. We live right at the corner where the proposed traffic light's going to be. And my question is, what is the plans for the land on the east side of Mauchunk Road? That's what I thought that would be the answer. In my opinion, we have an excellent opportunity to alleviate a lot of the traffic on Mauchunk Road, or at least keep it flowing. As I stated previously at another meeting, putting a traffic light at Mauchunk and Mechanicsville, and Tara's right, it is tricky getting out there in the morning, but you can see they're already planning two other, two other roads coming into their, under the road that'll be doing the same thing that we have to do on a daily basis, try to get out of your driveway or get out on the road. I feel that if, if this can be worked out, the property on the east side of Mechanicsville Road, as it's shown, they own all the way, all the way around the loop of Mechanicsville over to Whitehall. If you could put a road from that direction, cross it over into their, their other, their secondary road, not the main road, the secondary road, and reconfigure it, all their building, all their building lots, that's something that has to be done, it would alleviate the traffic. If you, if you put a red light at Mechanicsville Mauchunk Road, you have to go out there. It's unbearable in the morning. And I would say a third of the traffic turns onto Mechanicsville, so they don't go down Mauchunk. They come, everybody's coming down Mauchunk Road, they turn onto Mechanicsville. If you put a traffic light at that spot, it's going to back up all the way through Mechanicsville. And somebody made a statement that this is going to alleviate the traffic in Myersville and Rooksville, and it will, but it's going to bring it to South Whitehall. We don't have that traffic now because it moves. If we start putting traffic lights in intersections that are overloaded already, it's going to be unbearable. You know, I know this is something that, as far as the development and everything, that's, that's between everybody, you know, but traffic flow is traffic flow, and I think if you use your head a little bit, I understand this is, this is something that it's kind of a harebrained idea as far as putting another road all the way to Mechanicsville, but it alleviates the traffic that Tara's talking about, that we're going to get coming straight across and jumping onto Mechanicsville. And one more note, that if you're coming from, if you're a truck driver coming from MacArthur Road to Mechanicsville, Whitehall has no truck signs on all their roads, so they're all forced to our neighborhood. And I know why they're doing it. The roads can't handle it. But we get their trucks because everybody has no truck signs. We end up with all this, and we've been living with it. This is going to be unbearable. It just, it's, this is just, it's, I can't believe this is happening at that traffic light. This is just, I knew this was happening 50 years ago. My family's lived in this house for 75 years, so we watched it grow. And this is just, I think it can be handled, you know, as far as the development itself, okay, it's going to happen, but I think if we use a little thought, we have to keep the traffic moving. We just can't put red lights where they want them. We have to put them at a reasonable spot. If they have to put another road in, well, then so be it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. So you know, PennDOT dictates a lot of what you're talking about.
I'm sorry?
PennDOT would dictate a lot of what you're talking about, not necessarily.
Well, PennDOT's not going to say anything about that road. Is PennDOT going to, is PennDOT going to say they have to put a road in from the secondary road over to Mechanicsville?
You're right. They wouldn't suggest.
Well, that's the road. If that road's not there, everything else is viewed.
I'm talking red lights and traffic volumes.
Well, it has to be the red light. That's the only spot to put a red light. With that design, that is the only spot for a red light. It's that simple. You have to, we have to massage the plan to get it to where we want to have the red light. Down in the middle of your straightaway, that's, you have, you have, you have a half a mile to see each way then. This way, you're coming out of Mechanicsville, these trucks, you're going to see these stone trucks. It's crazy. They're not going to stop. They just, it's, it's impossible for these guys to stop at that short of a distance. But if that's what PennDOT wants to light, well, then so be it. No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just invite you to the transportation comp plan meeting where we talk about, it'll be a high level where we're looking at possible connections and things like that, so that we can kind of hash out this idea. It'll be in the whole township. We'll look at the whole township, but we'll be interactive and we can kind of, okay, yep.
I do understand that the, this property is currently zoned industrial. Can I just ask when that happened? Because it's part of the 2009 plan, it was sort of indicated that future use would be T4, so I just kind of wanted to know when that was rezoned, or if it was always zoned industrial in the plan, had it as?
I believe it's been pretty much always zoned industrial going back into the 70s or 80s.
Okay, so the township plan still considered that it should be a T4-type development even as late as 2009, despite the fact that it was, it is, and was actually zoned industrial. Thank you.
I believe the intent at that time was to, to rezone it a T4-type when the public utilities were brought in. So until that time, I think everybody just intended to leave it industrial until those public utilities were brought in.
And just a comment on T4 is, it refers to the transect, which is in our comp plan. T4 often, and a lot of the transect talks about building form and spacing, and it doesn't talk as much about use. So you can have a T4 industrial development that kind of has similar characteristics, similar spacing, and things like that. So T4, I know a lot of the graphics will show residential, but it can have some industrial, light industrial components, which is consistent with some of the uses that are in there. So it, it can.
Just a further comment, though. When you guys talk about this as an area of growth opportunity, that whole description talked about a village-like setting, right? So that sounds to me like it was the intent, not an industrial park.
I don't disagree with you.
Any other comments?
Good evening, council. My name's Tyler Clement. I live at 2748 Suncrest. Like many of my neighbors here, I've come to express my vehement opposition to this plan, to the development of this property, for all the reasons that have been said. You know, I would, I could echo each and every one of them when it comes to traffic. You know, I've got four small kids that attempt to ride their bike up and down Suncrest Drive on a regular basis. The idea that this would be an arterial connection through an industrial development is not something that I would look forward to, right? So I, again, for all, for all these reasons, the concerns over water, the concerns over traffic, the concerns over, well, the sewage load on, on the property around us for the unknown industrial development that'll be there. So I, I just want to make it publicly known that I echo with my opposition to it. I'd also ask formally for any of the comments that were made, given to the JRS Corporation by the planning commission, to be made publicly available so that way we can read them as well.
They're all included in the minutes, and once the minutes are approved generally at the following meeting, then they're available on our website for download. So everyone should have a good view of what everyone said.
The meeting's also being recorded, so there'll be a video on, we have a YouTube channel, and planning commission meetings are on there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Yes, sir.
Dean Watering, 3139 Cypress Station Road. Everybody hit the nail on the head pretty well, even Mr. Wilson in the beginning, in the start, he hit a lot of topics we're all concerned with. I've lived on Cypress Station Road my whole life, except for the four years I was in the military. It's a beautiful area. I'm sure many of you know it. With the open farms and this would be a travesty to that area. It would just ruin the whole, the whole area for sure with the traffic. Again, I don't want to, you know, they all covered it pretty well, but well water's an issue. Like the one gentleman said, you know, some of them wells are really deep, they had to go really deep just to get water, and anytime you do anything like this, it's going to, it's going to require a lot of, you know, a lot of water, and the traffic would be, it would be impossible. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So I want to open it up to people that are online. We did just experience an upgrade, and we're having trouble figuring out how to mute other people, so hopefully it works. It worked at the BOC meeting, so please type your name and address in the chat, and I'm going to start with Jacob Roth, 1499 White Oak Road. Let me unmute.
Can you hear me?
Jacob, you should be able to speak.
Can you hear me?
Uh-oh.
Hello? Hello?
Try now, Jacob.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you now.
All right, perfect. I want to thank everyone, I want to echo some of the comments that have been stated before. I think everyone has very similar concerns. I can tell you, my main concern is traffic, particularly as it relates to Parkland High School. I'm a recent Parkland alum in the past few years, and I can tell you, traffic particularly heading north on Cedar Crest early in the morning, can be backed up all the way from the entrance to the high school, as far down as Huckleberry, even down towards Cedar Crest. So just for, for the Planning Commission and for the JARIS Corporation to keep in mind, you know, any, any problems this development would cause with traffic, specifically heading north on Cedar Crest in those early morning hours, would be a real problem, not to mention traffic generated by other developments. I also want to echo some of the other comments about potential uses to this development. Obviously, you know, if, if it's going to happen, as per the zoning, you know, I appreciate the JARIS Corporation and the Bronsteins, you know, saying they want to build a positive legacy. And, you know, as much as I'm sure we're all opposed to this development, if it's going to happen, it should happen in a responsible way. And I know this is way down the road, because we're just at the sketch plan phase here, but it uses that would reduce traffic. Recreation, instead of, you know, certain uses or tenants, you know, that may bring more traffic, larger vehicles, that would cause more traffic problems. I know that's way in the future, but it's, it's just something to keep in mind. And I think my overarching comment is, you know, in the past decade or so, there have been other projects, Ridge Farms is the big one, I think that everybody knows about, where the public didn't really feel heard or, or included, and that their views really weren't reflected in the final product. So I just, I would ask the Planning Commission and the JARIS Corporation, and the Bronsteins, the number one way to leave a positive legacy is to just be mindful of the public suggestions. Take reasonable suggestions and incorporate them into this plan. I think that would be better for everyone. I think it would really help to turn the page into kind of a new era, where, you know, some of these projects unfortunately are going to go forward, but if they are going to move forward, they have maximum public input, and the whole community will be better for it. So that's all I have, thank you.
And there were a few other questions that were typed in, and I kind of lost track. So if anybody else online would like to speak, please type your name and address. Eden Jepson, 2729 Suncrest Drive.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So it was mentioned earlier that as a part of the T-TAC4 guideline for, oh, sorry, for the comprehensive plan, that industrial was included in that. The, and I'm going off of table 4-TAC4, Guidelines for Future Character Areas, the description of that usage would be less than 40,000 square feet, and office, light industrial, flex space, research, and alternative energy. I do not believe that description coincides with what this project represents in its current form.
I believe, I don't have the table in front of me, but I believe you said, light industrial and research and development? That is...
Manufacturing.
Manufacturing was on it.
Industrial to manufacturing.
Okay.
No light industrial.
Sounds relatively consistent. Again, we don't have specific uses that we're looking at, that would come at a future date. We're at a sketch plan at this point. We have a copy of the comp plan. Do you want it? Sure. Thank you. All right, under the table, which I believe is table 4-4, I think is what you mentioned. T4 suburban to urbanized neighborhoods. The general intent is residential development with neighborhood services, TND development, existing villages, mix of lot and house sizes, including ADUs or accessory dwelling units, small sale commercial, less than or equal to 40,000 square feet in residential mixed use, primary TDR receiving area. Interesting. Typical lot areas, 5,000, 10,000 square foot lots, mix of dwellings and live-work units, traditional neighborhood development, transit-oriented development. For non-residential, you're looking at mixed use, live-work units, retail office, institutional, within approved business park uses, light office, light industrial, flex space, research, alternative energy. Those are to be at a 40% to 50% lot coverage. Typical building size, minimum of two stories, maximum three and a half stories, with up to four stories along major corridors. And the infrastructure is supposed to be public water and sewer, sidewalks, and trails and paths. So that's the description of the T4 suburban to urbanized neighborhoods.
Dave and Greg, could you explain the TDR? Very interesting.
Yeah, Greg mentioned TDR, which stands for Transfer Development Rights. And that is, people that are familiar, I often say, there's tools in the planner's toolbox, and TDR is one of those. And what that does is, essentially will have receiving areas and sending areas. And the concept is, a landowner could take property or development rights of a property, you can have five houses on it, you can take that from a sending area and transfer that development to a receiving area. So what that is, what that accomplishes is areas that may not be appropriate for development, better for preservation, allows the township to have that preserved for lighter intensity use, but a more intense use in a receiving area. So it's a way, a mechanism for preservation, but we have to have the receiving area. So that's something that we've talked about in the comp plan process, that, you know, as a concept, it's talked about a lot, and it, it's a pretty big lift to get it to actually happen. There's a lot of intricacies with it and pitfalls, but we are looking into that as a recommendation coming out of the comp plan. While I'm talking about the comp plan, one of the things, somebody mentioned that, you know, there's a hard job, we have a hard job here. I have a list of 20 things, and what we do is, we try and balance property rights, the rights of the property owner to develop smartly, that address concerns as best as possible, and to make the best outcome of that type of development. And like I said, there, there's tools that we can use, and to maintain property rights, but also get a better product, addressing a lot of the concerns. So it is a hard job, but that, that's what we're doing as part of the comp plan. And, you know, being a sketch plan, it's an opportunity for us at the staff level to discuss options and alternatives with the JARIS Corp, to see how we can do some of the, what they would like to see, or what we would like to see, and come up with solutions. So that's kind of how the process works with the sketch plan, and here we are at the very preliminary stage of this.
I'm not necessarily responding to what Dave said, but I, I just want to say, with respect to Mr. Roth, for example, there's no landowner, no, I did not say developer, there's no landowner in South Whitehall Township, or in this vicinity, like JARIS. Not only are they going to take, quote, "reasonable suggestions," end quote, into account, they often make those reasonable suggestions on their own. When you talk about TDRs, what do you need to do TDRs? You need to own a lot of land. You could talk about TDRs till you're blue in the face, but if you own 27 acres, it ain't going to work. Who's best suited to work with TDRs if that's something the township wants? No one other than JARIS, than JARIS can dedicate open space for recreation, trails, greenway, et cetera. They own all of that land. They can dedicate it, they can transfer it, they're willing to do all of those items, things that typical developers do not want to do. But I want to remind everybody, there's been a whole lot of discussion about a comprehensive plan and T4, which is not a zoning designation. There's only one zoning designation for this parcel, and that's I. And if I came here tonight, and I was trying to put something in place on a parcel where it was not permitted, but I said, I found on page 46 of the comprehensive plan, that you might like to see institutional facilities here, I guarantee, I want, I'd get shown the door, because someone would say, it's not permitted. So while I recognize the importance of a comprehensive plan, and I participated the last time, and I participate it this time, for JARIS, for Dorney Park, and others, everybody needs to understand, this has to be a give and take. I've written down many of the things that I've heard tonight. I wrote them down, knowing if Rick and Betsy were here, that they would not find them objectionable. But you also do hear both sides of that, right? Which is, we'd love to have a big recreational facility, what a legacy. I bet you the Bronsteins would love to have it too. But that brings traffic, right? So we've got to work through this. We will work through this. But I just want everybody to understand, this is property that they own. This is an asset that they own, and you can't just walk in and take it away from them. It's like somebody coming into your garage and taking your lawnmower. This is something that belongs to them. We'll do it responsibly, we'll do it reasonably, and I think you have the type of partner that can make this happen. I'm not asking you to believe me tonight, but I have a feeling, once there is exposure to these conversations, members on that side of the dais, staff, and others will confirm what I'm saying. So not much more we can do tonight, but I, I just want everybody to understand that I didn't need to come here tonight, I don't mean that in a bad way, I didn't need to come to know that we needed to develop this responsibly. And that's not because you got to, we want to get it through. We want to develop it responsibly, because they have been stewards of this land for 100 years. They own all of the historic buildings in the township, other than, other than the King George Inn. I mean, that's what they do. They're maintaining them on their dime, because that's what they want to give back to this community. Thank you.
Are there any more? Okay. Hey, sir?
They own a lot of historic buildings.
Microphone, please.
Talk to the microphone.
They are, they own a lot of historic buildings. There are a lot of very nice historic buildings that they own, and they've let them go.
Directly into the microphone, please.
They let, they have not preserved them. There's a lot of wonderful 1800s houses that they have let go, and there are historic structures in this area. And I'm sorry, I've dealt with Bronsteins in the past, they're not, I've found them not to be credible at all. They're just, they, they had this, they had this property in a trust apparently for, for quite a year, and they couldn't get rid of it until recently. So I, you know, I just question their credibility myself.
Are there any other comments? Okay, thank you. I think we've got, that's, this is forward, you know, we, we aren't taking any action tonight. Maybe next week.
When you said that before, I'll just tell you, I'll end on a light note. Brendan Sullivan's at NME, anything, when, when Ollie North was at trial, this just came up, and how long ago is that, with the Iran-Contra? But you might remember, they were questioning Ollie North, and Brendan Sullivan, who's a famous lawyer from Washington DC, said something to the senator, and the senator chastised him, and said, "We're not talking to you, we're talking to Ollie North." And he said, "I'm not a potted plant," which was like a famous statement. So that's why I have to ask for approval, because I'm not a potted plant, so.
Okay.
So, take care, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to make one comment to the public. There was talk about getting our comments and what we review, all that's posted on our website. You can download the, I'm looking at it right now, the agenda packet for each project, and you could see exactly what we get to see, so, for the future, okay?
And as a follow-up, the next comp plan meeting is Tuesday, March 29th, at 7:00 PM. It'll be a joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission.
That's the, that's the Planning Commission meeting.
I got it wrong. April, sorry. It'll be April 12th.
12.
I'm sorry. April the 12th is a joint Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners meeting, which will be going over the comp plan, as Dave has said, here in this building, also virtually. And we do invite the public to please attend and participate with us.
Okay, again, thank you for all your comments. I thought this was a good exchange, so that the applicant does get to hear your concerns, and they're important.
Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay. We are now going to move on to Transportation Infrastructure Update. Tony?
Yes, thank you. Couple things here, so the Transportation Impact Plan, the new one, will be going into effect in October 12th of this year, which means that the draft approval is June of this year, which means that public comment starts in May. So they're going to release it shortly, but definitely keep the...
Excuse me, could you all talk outside of the room?
Anyway, sorry about that. No, so the tip goes into effect October, that means the draft approval's in June, meaning that public comment is in May. So once it releases, which will be shortly, be sure to look at that, that gives us a month or so until we start public comment, and to try to get our projects pushed up, or whatever's on there.
When is our, do we have a, is the transportation one scheduled before?
So, transportation is scheduled near the end. I think we did that purposely, so we could get every, all the pieces together, and then see how to connect it.
Okay, but do we want to, we have an opportunity here to start putting things on the tip.
Yeah, that would be, we should absolutely do, Tony, when, I'm sorry, I was...
No problem, public comments in May.
In May?
Yes.
So...
We probably want to start talking about it next month.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure out a way to do that. Yeah, well, we'll figure out a way to do that. I'm thinking a separate workshop outside of goals and objectives where we can talk about projects and things like that.
Okay, good. I don't think it has to be the whole.
Yeah, one of the good things about how we're kind of doing the comp plan is we're flexible. So if things come up, we can, you know, address them, but I also don't want to stray from our path too much. So I'm, we'll look into it, but I'm thinking as a separate.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
Yes. Since I know Tony keeps wonderful records of all the issues out there, transportation wise in the township. We probably have a very good list already built up. We also have a fairly light planning commission next month. So perhaps we can review that list at next month's planning commission and see if we can add some stuff, you know, get some priorities off the planning commission for that. And that way, going into May, Pitcock will have that list in hand.
I don't know if you want to do one of your surveys of the planning commission with Tony's list to prioritize.
We can certainly do it.
Only if everyone answers.
So we'll work with Tony. There's, I think it'll be important to go over what's existing, what's on the LRTP and we have a bunch of projects in unmet need. So we'll go through that list and that'll be our starting point. And I think we could certainly put something on the agenda for the April meeting.
Okay.
Not, not the April workshop, but the April regular planning commission meeting.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Greg.
If Pitcock doesn't know, Cedar Chris Boulevard.
Two other things, two grant opportunities are coming up. A PA Walk grant opportunity due May 13th is the application deadline. It's a $3,000 to $20,000 grant for developing plans and policies for walkable communities. So I guess something similar to what was done for Hamilton Boulevard corridor, that plan is something that has the potential to get a grant.
Would that be for like the trail?
Potential trail, yes.
Is that Walkworks or is that something else? That's the Walkworks one. Yeah, we've looked at that at a staff level and we have a couple of ideas that were floating around. One of the things we talked about at the staff level is looking at the Walbert corridor, connecting 309 all the way down via sidewalk and identifying gaps and things like that. Some of that work was begun with the Penn Praxis work. They did a section on Walbert corridor. So potentially applying for a grant to further that work to get a little more nuts and bolts and figure out exactly how to proceed.
Is that a matching grant or 100%? Do you know?
I, I don't know yet.
Don't know, okay.
I'll take a second, but on topics aside, the holdup with the dollar.
The holdup is, it's in the designer's court at this point. They provided a plan, I would say a month or two ago of what they want to do with light, very light detail. We had a comment letter that went back to them. Geotech also had a comment letter that went back to them and they have not responded for over a month. I know Dave and I have been in discussion, I think Jennifer's also been in discussions about what to do. We went back to their.
What was the original, I mean, it was designed for sidewalk.
So there was a right of way issue with PennDOT and that held it up for a long time and that just got resolved.
Yeah, end of the year.
Yeah. So the idea was we'd get them through design into construction in the spring. We're getting through the spring, so we're pushing harder to get them to finish it up. The PennDOT issue was, you know, understandable because frankly, it's PennDOT. But once that got cleared, we're certainly pushing as hard as we can at this point.
Last grant, last thing on my list is a DCD grant. It's a multimodal, multi, multimodal transportation improvement projects, up to $3 million for the grant money, is for implementation of plans. So it's actually the construction of these plans, pass sidewalks, these type of plans. So anywhere that we foresee or, you know, the Hamilton Boulevard or there's, there's a handful of them throughout the township that we could think of, but that's another grant, June, end of June's is the application deadline.
With that grant, is it for, one of the things that we often have to deal with is how far along in design should it be before we get to the grant? So one of the things that we always try and figure out is when we can get the engineering design paid for through a grant and then that gives us the shovel ready project, which a lot of grants are looking for, especially with the infrastructure money coming. I think any shovel ready project is going to get put to the top of the list. So anything we can do to get shovel ready projects, cranking is going to help our chances of getting access to some of that infrastructure funding.
I guess the sticking point is how do you get the money to do the design? Because you need the design to get the grant money. So it's.
It's the old catch 22.
There's no reimbursement on design.
Some grants will do that, will fund that, some won't. So that's what we have to look, we're always looking at that with every grant we look at.
And like full designs needed or sketches aren't?
It depends. Yeah.
All over the place.
It is all over the place. Every grant's different, unfortunately.
We have some candidates, I guess.
We do.
But Hamilton Street, that's just a sketch that.
Yeah, the Hamilton corridor was just purely conceptual. There's some work that can be done in there. I think for me personally, that's a priority. I cringe every time I see people crossing Hamilton Boulevard. Skybridge tunnel.
Tunnel, something, yeah.
Yeah. Crosswalks or however, but something needs to be done in that. One of the things that we're going to talk about, which ties into these grant opportunities and funding and is when we get to the transportation section is to prioritize corridors for future study, for future design work and things like that, so that when we or future commissioners or future planning commission members, they can look at that plan and say, 10 years from now, they'll say, oh, they thought this was a candidate for future study. They can take that and that becomes actually material for grant applications. So, you know, the comp plan sets the stage for a lot of things and one of the things is grant applications that we can identify corridors. So that's one of the things that we're going to discuss later.
You done? Okay, thanks. The next thing on the agenda is comprehensive plan update two. Do you have anything more to say?
We have a hard job.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Courtesy of the floor, Tara, is that your name, Tara?
Yeah. My name's Tara.
Okay.
I'm here, I was a state of the art.
Okay. Well, thank you for staying.
I was going to apply. Your position up here.
I'm not sure. I don't know how to behave.
If you like, I can scream a little.
That's it then for the courtesy of the floor. Thank you for your comments and thanks for staying and listening to us. Okay.
Tony on the chat?
Before we adjourn, Greg, can you tell us about the April?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
We have one plan in for April and it's an oldie but a goodie, Duncan Allentown.
All right.
I can say they, they really haven't changed too much, other than showing the sidewalk between the driveway and the Westfield Medical Center. And they came our shopping center, yes.
They have like the loop drive-through sort of.
There's about three sheets of vehicle movement to prove that yes, fire trucks and basically everything can get through, but basically the design is very similar to what you saw last time.
And what's next week? Is it next week? Is that the?
Week and a half.
Oh, week from Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday. And that's, that's Ridge Farm, Final Plan Phase 1A and 1670 Church Road, Potta Properties Inc., which is right over there across the street, across, across Church Road from the PPL Training Center. That, that very old dilapidated building.
Okay. All right.
Tuesday, the 29th.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Greg or Dave, could you tell somebody to change that clock?
Which one?
I already did today.